Project 25026, OSF Heart of Mary Medical Center, Urbana. As per the rules of the Illinois Health Facilities and Services Review Board, I would like to read the legal notice into record. In accordance with the requirements of the Illinois Health Facilities Planning Act, notice is given of receipt to reduce beds and discontinue categories of service at an acute care hospital in Urbana. Project 25026, OSF Heart of Mary Medical Center, Urbana. The applicants are OSF Healthcare System and OSF Healthcare System doing business as OSF Heart of Mary Medical Center. The applicants propose to reduce its medical surgical bed complement from 110 to 25 beds and discontinue its pediatrics, intensive care, comprehensive physical rehabilitation, open-heart surgery, and cardiac catheterization categories of service, reducing the overall bed count from 156 to 40 beds. The hospital is located at 1400 West Park Street, Urbana, and there is no project cost. The staff of the Illinois Health Facilities and Services Review Board will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, August 21st, 2025, beginning at 1:00 PM at the Urbana City Building, City Council Chambers, 400 South Vine Street, Urbana, Illinois. The hearing is an open public meeting at which all parties interested will be afforded an opportunity to present written and/or verbal comments relevant to the project. All allegations or assertions should be relevant to the need for the proposed project and be supported by two copies of documentation or materials, preferably printed or typed on eight-and-one-half inches by 11 inches paper. The public hearing is to be held by the Illinois Department of Public Health pursuant to the Illinois Health Facilities Planning Act. The hearing is open to the public and will afford an opportunity for parties with interest to present written and/or verbal comment relevant to the project. Consideration by the state board has been tentatively scheduled for the August 12th, 2025, I'm sorry, I apologize, has been tentatively scheduled for the November 18th, 2025, meeting of the Illinois Health Facility and Services Review Board. If you have not done so, please sign in using the appropriate registration forms. One form is for individuals who want to provide testimony in favor or opposition to the project. The other form is for individuals to register their attendance who do not wish to testify. To ensure that the Illinois Health Facilities and Services Review Board's public hearings protect the privacy and maintain the confidentiality of an individual's health information, covered entities as defined by the Health Insurance Portability Act of 1996, such as facilities, hospital providers, health plans, and healthcare clearinghouses submitting oral or written testimony that discloses protected health information of individuals, shall have a valid written authorization from that individual. The authorization shall allow the covered entity to share the individual's protected health information at this hearing. Those of you who came with prepared texts for your presentation may choose to submit the text without giving testimony. However, if you're giving oral testimony, we ask that you please be as brief as possible. As per the legal notice, I would appreciate two copies of your testimony. When you make your presentation, please give the court reporter the correct spelling of your complete name. We have identified a chief spokesperson for the applicant, and we will have that individual make the first presentation. At this time, the board would like to call Mr. J.T. Barnhart to the table.
Good to go? Yep. Well, thank you for the opportunity. My name is J.T. Barnhart. I'm the president with OSF Healthcare and oversee our hospitals in Urbana and Danville. Happy to be here to discuss our strategic transformation plan to combine our two hospitals, Heart of Mary Medical Center and Sacred Heart Medical Center, into one hospital with two campuses. Give a little, just kind of a brief overview, since OSF acquired the two hospitals about eight years ago, specifically here in Urbana at Heart of Mary Medical Center, a lot of work has been done around growing our primary care provider base, growing our primary care patient panel, at the same time trying to work on specialty services, on expanding specialty services, recruiting providers around different areas. And so we've had some successes in the specialty side, namely around cardiology. The work around our primary care panel, however, just never quite built as robust a patient panel as we had hoped and expected. We had had some challenges there in establishing that. And as of today, we currently only have about 5,600 patients in our primary care panel. So that would be all the family medicine, internal medicine, patients with providers. That constitutes about 2.5% of the overall residents of the county. And so while we've had, sorry, get a little background there. So while we've had some ability to recruit in specialty providers without a robust network of referral physicians, providers, we have just not seen the growth around the specialty services as well. And also, from an overall market share perspective, as of today, we only see, we have about 8.5%, just a little over 8.5% of overall market share. So that's focus on Heart of Mary and Urbana. At the same time, our sister facility, Sacred Heart Medical Center in Danville, which serves as the only acute care hospital for Vermillion County, has seen over the last 10 years a significant decline in specialty providers. It has become a challenging community to recruit specialty providers to. We've had providers who have retired out, who have left the community, and so as we've looked at that community, the patients that we serve, it's very underserved from a healthcare perspective, and our patient base there is highly Medicaid. And so from a standpoint of the system's perspective is how can we best utilize the resources that we have in the right locations to better serve both communities? And so work around this project is to be able to shift some of our specialty providers, some of our specialty services to Vermillion County, to Danville. It's also a community with a lot of transportation barriers and issues in leaving Danville to explore healthcare services outside of the area. And so we feel excited about the opportunity to really build a robust community hospital in Danville from a specialty service perspective where we hadn't in the past, going to see a lot of successes in improving lives in that community. And then, you know, back to Heart of Mary Medical Center and the Urbana campus, as we've evaluated, it seems clear with an 8.5% market share that the community does not need OSF to duplicate all of our specialty services. But the one area that we felt very strongly in our need to continue and to expand was behavioral health. And so our overall plan is to continue to run the adult behavioral health unit that we currently have. In addition to that, we are, we've gotten about $13 million of capital from the OSF Health System to expand two new floors for behavioral health services. We see a huge preponderance of inpatient behavioral health from kind of university age, from that student sort of 18 to 26. And so we are going to take a former medical unit, acute medical unit, and convert it into a 13-bed private young adult behavioral health acute unit. So that's 18 to 26 patient age demographic programs set for that. Those will all be private rooms. Additionally, we're renovating a second unit, another former medical acute unit, to focus on our senior population from behavioral health perspective. So that unit as well will have 13 private beds with all of the programs and focuses around our senior population. We call it a geriatric psych unit on that floor. Additionally, we will keep at the Urbana campus, an emergency room, basic service emergency room, the same as what we have today. Spending about a half a million dollars in the emergency room to renovate some of the medical rooms into behavioral rooms, do some renovations to the area to better serve more behavioral health patients is our expectation once we make this conversion. Additionally, we will have a 25-bed kind of medical behavioral health unit. We will do medical detox on that unit, really for patients who have a behavioral health diagnosis but need medical clearance before they can move on to the next level of behavioral health care, the acute units. That's what that unit will be staged for. Additionally, we'll continue to provide all of the ancillary services that we will need for the behavioral health component, the ER. So that's food service, you know, facilities, housekeeping, the imaging components that we'll need to do that, pharmacy components. And so there will be, what we expect is about 225 staff members that will be required to run the operation on the Urbana campus. Really excited about the opportunity to better serve this very vulnerable patient population. We know that across the state, across the country, behavioral health units are closing, health systems are deciding to shutter those services, and our mission is to lean into that, is to provide a really robust program on the inpatient side. We're also expanding our outpatient services. We'll have an intensive outpatient program, a partial hospitalization program, all of the medical management, excuse me, medication management that's required as part of this. And so with additional providers coming in and some opportunities there to continue to do what we do well, but also expand the services and some new programs, I think it's going to be a really unique resource for Champaign County, not just Champaign County and Vermillion County, but for the whole state and the whole region.
Next, the board would like to call Ms. Jennifer Putman.
Certainly, ma'am. Let me turn on the microphone for you. Okay, okay. I am a resident of Urbana of more than three decades duration, and I'm inspired to comment today by my recent experience as a very well-cared-for guest of the OSF rehab unit. And I'm inspired by a letter to the editor that was published in the News Gazette on August 8th. My stay in the rehab unit, this 76-year-old who lives alone had fallen, and I could not get up. You've seen the ads for Life Alert, "I've fallen and I can't get up." Well, I had fallen and I couldn't get up. This 76-year-old decided to spend the night on the floor. Maybe when I woke up in the morning, things would be better. Things were not better. It was time to dial 911. When the paramedics asked, "Where would I like to be taken, which hospital?", I didn't have to think twice. I immediately said, "OSF." My husband, now late husband, had been a patient at OSF on more than one occasion. We were both impressed with superior care and just a good feeling about the facility. It was like home. And, very important, it would be easy for friends, especially one who so loyally exercises on my behalf the power of attorney for healthcare, to visit me, to run errands, and to ensure care for my home alone dog. Well, thank heavens for OSF's rehab unit and for my rehabilitation. As you can see, it's ongoing and will be a project that goes on as long as I'm alive. But little did I know, back in early June, that I would be among the last Urbana residents so fortunate as to benefit from such good care as provided at OSF rehab unit in Urbana. It was the third or fourth day of my stay there that Mr. J.T. Barnhart called the staff together to inform them of the demise of the unit as they knew it. Although they did their best to mask their feelings, the physical therapists and occupational therapists who were working with me were crushed, aghast. They apologized for the show of emotion, and we did our best, all of us, to carry on bravely. My rehab has progressed, but then I read sentences in the newspaper, such as what was published yesterday, that services set for elimination in Urbana include comprehensive physical rehabilitation. So I was lucky, perhaps others will not be so lucky. Maybe it doesn't have to be this way, which brings me to the letter written by Dr. Ravi Hasanadka. The headline above his letter is "Speak Up Before It's Too Late." And Dr. Hasanadka ends the letter, "It may not be too late to fix this wrong," and that's what brought me here today. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, the board would like to call Ms. Marsha Cooper.
I didn't have anything prepared.
Okay. Is there anything you'd like to?
No, I was not on the list.
Okay, thank you. Next, the board would like to call Toby Storts.
I came in support of OSF. Last year, I had a mini-stroke. I had a mini-stroke, and they said, "Where do you want to go, OSF?" Now, I have been to Carl, and there is nothing wrong with Carl. It's just there is a different atmosphere at OSF. And I can't tell you how wonderfully they treated me at OSF. I felt like I was a princess. I mean, even the floor cleaners, everybody. And I have been in places where, for instance, I have to go to the bathroom, can someone come, and you have to wait a half an hour. The nurses were right there. I can't say enough wonderful things about OSF, and I think it would be very sad that we don't have the choice anymore. I went to my doctor the other day, and she said, the thing she liked most about this area, and she's been here, I don't know how many years she's been a doctor, she said, she came and is a pre-med student, and she said what she liked was we had choices. And it's just, it's so sad, and it's just the atmosphere. We care. I mean, I understand financial, but it's a different atmosphere that we care about you. It's not like, "Oh, you're just a patient here." I had an instance, I visited a friend in Carl, and I'm not saying anything bad about them, but I got the tray table stuck under my friend's bed, and a nurse walked by, and I said, "Oh, could you help?", she said, "I'm on break." She said, "You're going to have to go up to the main desk." And I just, you know, what would have taken her two seconds to help me? But that was okay. So I just, I'm here in support of OSF, and I don't think you could find a better hospital. Thank you.
Next, the board would like to call Ravi Hasanadka.
Hello, I'm Ravi Hasanadka. As an aside, I didn't know about the 8.5 by 11 sheets of paper, so I just emailed my comments to the email address.
Thank you.
Okay. So I've been a Urbana resident since 2014, and since that time, I've worked as a vassal surgeon at Christie Clinic, SIU School of Medicine, OSF, and currently, and I am unemployed. About to get back to work in October. So let these comments reflect my own opinions and none of those organizations. So I don't think anybody is here to deny the need for expanded mental health services. What I'm here to say is that I oppose this change in the certificate of need for OSF healthcare in Urbana because they are decreasing much-needed medical services. They can truly expand medical health services without decreasing medical services. OSF, for the last six years, has had two completely empty medical floors, so they can run the OR, the cath lab, critical care unit, cardiology telemetry floor, a general medical surgical floor, the inpatient rehab unit, and the outpatient therapy services, as well as the primary care offices, while still renovating the current 32-bed mental health floor they've had since 1961 to a 40-bed psychiatry unit by using the two empty floors. Instead, they are slashing all those services with plans to keep just the ER and a single hospitalist per shift. Without consultants of any kind, almost all ER visits that require admission will be transferred to other centers. Historically, Champaign-Urbana has been a two-hospital town. Since 2018 to 19, when the transition of Christie Clinic providers to Carl occurred, Carl Hospital has been running at max capacity the majority of that time, usually on diversion for transfers. By cutting all these services at OSF, instead of adding the mental health renovation to the current services, the 50 to 60 patients that had been at OSF each day would have to likely be transferred out of town. Point two, from a financial perspective, the OSF in Danville, while having a larger primary care base than the Urbana market, is on everybody's list for hospitals threatened to close after the Medicaid cuts coming from Trump's big, beautiful bill. So if OSF is restricting services for financial reasons, they clearly chose to close the wrong hospital. Danville is transferring patients out constantly. The mayor of Danville was cited in yesterday's News Gazette in favor of the deal because surgical services would be expanding to Danville. In reality, Danville already has general surgery. Danville is not going to get a single thing they didn't already have there, and patients being transferred out will continue to be transferred out. And with Carl running at capacity, the people of Vermillion County will be going two to three hours away to Bloomington and Peoria. Point three, OSF does not care about this town. Some conspiracy theories suggest that by changing the certificate of need, OSF is then able to sell a psych hospital to Carl without the monopoly concerns that had been present in the past, when Carl wanted to buy Present Covenant as the hospital was previously known, with plans at that time to turn it into a mental health facility. So either that will happen within a year or two, or the 40 beds that are going to be full of patients from Peoria and Bloomington because there's not any reasonable number of mental health beds across the OSF healthcare system will not be that accessible to people locally. Point four, losing these medical services is truly an equity issue. Patients who are not insured or struggling financially, who are not allowed to go to Carl due to a large debt, many of which are vanished from Carl, if you ask them, will now have to go to the OSF emergency room, where they will be transferred out of town, where their families and support systems likely will not be able to visit with them well, where their follow-up appointments will be in Bloomington or Peoria, where transportation will be an issue. The list of injustices will go on. So if I were a progressive government official in Urbana, I would be encouraging OSF to keep its medical, surgical, and cardiac services while expanding its mental health unit in the space they already have, that the OSF Foundation has been fundraising for the last two years to renovate. Point five, OSF has already had a massive reduction in force since their announcement in June of both providers, as well as nurses and other hospital staff. So we're currently getting a preview of what is to come. They have closed the OR and cath lab already and plan to close the critical care unit tomorrow. With consultants' availability already quite depleted, there are only five medical patients in the hospital yesterday and 13 patients in the psych unit. So already, patients are being transferred out at higher rates as Carl is regularly full and the psych unit is not close to capacity, yet they are asking for more beds. So in summary, I oppose the changes in the certificate of need for OSF Heart of Mary as I am strongly opposed to reducing medical services to below the actual need for Champaign County.
Next, the board would like to call Leanna Cosman.
I failed to know about the two paper documents, so I will email my comments. My experience, I want to come at this as a parent of a special needs child and as an EMS provider in our community. First, I'd like to say that OSF hasn't had a pediatric patient in their hospital for years. Nobody at that age has been admitted for many, many years. Their exit from the family practice in this community was abrupt and showed no care or concern for any of their patients. My son received a phone call from the office that said, "We're closing our office. We're done. Do you need any prescription refills?" There was no offer to set him up with a provider in Danville, a provider in Bloomington, any provider anywhere else. It was just abrupt and done. Historically, OSF tried detox in Danville some years ago. They had several detox beds. It was an epic failure, so I'm not sure what that's going to look like moving forward here. With regard to the Danville patients, social determinants of health are a concept that I think healthcare really focuses on. Danville has a large population of people that live below the poverty line, maybe have one car for two adults that are working. When their children go into that hospital and they have to be transferred to Peoria for pediatric admissions, that's a problem. Those families are torn apart. Financially, it's a stretch for them. It's very, very hard for them. So those services, they're going past a hospital in Champaign that has those services because OSF wants to keep those patients in their system. I struggle with that. The Danville has a cath lab there. As I understand it, it's not a cath lab that's going to be functioning, so there will be no, there may be cardiologists in Danville that are able to see patients on the outpatient basis, but any patient that comes in there with a STEMI or any sort of medical incident now has to be transferred, again, past a community to another community further along, whether that's Bloomington or Peoria. Those services were available here, and they're needed here. So I think that that is a disservice to the patients who have to have those cardiac services. Patients don't understand as well when they go into a hospital by ambulance. Ambulances aren't going to take patients to OSF. This is just my opinion. Ambulances are not going to take patients to OSF because we know they don't have a cardiologist there. They don't have an operating room there. They don't have the services that those patients need. So they're going to have to go to either Danville or Carl. People want to go to OSF. They want to see the doctors that they know. They want to be treated in their community by a hospital that has been there for decades. So as a private citizen of Champaign, I am opposed to this change. Thank you.
Next, the board would like to call Chris Stor. If I may remind you, please speak into the microphone clearly.
Thank you. I'm sorry to say I didn't prepare a statement, but I can provide a written statement. My name is Chris Stor. I was formerly a chief executive officer for a mental health organization that was statewide and formerly an elected official. And I don't come before you in either capacity, but rather speak as a private citizen. I know through my work that mental and behavioral health patients don't always come with only that disorder, but sometimes a co-occurring physical or range of illnesses and disabilities. So while I applaud the expansion of the behavioral and mental health facilities at OSF because we know that that's needed, and I fully appreciate the commitment of the religious that have spent so much of their career, their lives, in service to the community and at OSF. I am concerned about the loss of services for these individuals that will show up as behavioral health but have these other disorders, and how are they going to get this treatment? I'm also rather concerned because historically, the other hospital that's in town has been known to be stingy, let's say, with their charity care. And this is generally known in the community. And when I worked as a volunteer at some organizations in town, we were told by police that if we had a medical emergency, directed to take the patients to OSF because they would be accepted there, and it was not certain that they would be accepted or welcomed at the other hospital in town. Thank you for your kind attention, and I express my support for the OSF and their mission, and wish you well in your decision.
Thank you. Lastly, the board would like to call Carol Friesen.
Good afternoon, I'm Carol Friesen. I'm the chief executive officer for the eastern region for OSF Healthcare, and I have a few wrap-up comments to share today. Healthcare is dynamic, it's never static. When OSF acquired Presence Medical Center and renamed it the Heart of Mary Medical Center in 2017, our plans to serve this area and this community and grow services within Champaign County and beyond, that was our intent. We knew it would be difficult in that, and we weren't wrong about that challenge. At the time we acquired the hospital, we fully realized that Carl Foundation Hospital had a dominant service share within the market, which is now 78% of the inpatient admissions, while Heart of Mary's market share has dropped from 20% to 8.5% this year. Another set of numbers telling a similar story is roughly, of the 212,000 residents, our primary care panel size is approximately 5,600 patients, which is about 2.5, 2.6% of the residents of Champaign County. And at the time when we acquired the hospital, there were 80 physicians on staff in 2018, and today there are 39, approximately half of that number. The results have not been indicative of our efforts in Urbana or our investment in the community. Our investment has approached $400 million in that period of time, meaning that the scarce resources not being used have been used to benefit this population. And over the eight years, OSF has expanded by the acquisition of $111 million. We've invested almost $43 million worth of capital over that period of time, and we've subsidized $236 million in operating losses through July. These numbers mandated that something had to change at Heart of Mary, and those changes had to be significant. We went through an extensive turnaround plan over the last 24 months, yet it was time to discontinue services that were not being utilized for the community. So how could we better utilize these resources? The changes contemplated will redistribute precious resources to better serve larger numbers of patients and improve the well-being of individuals within the area. The discontinuation of services with low and declining volumes at Heart of Mary Medical Center and will restructure Heart of Mary and Sacred Heart under one hospital that will continue to thrive for the future and will make this care sustainable in both communities. The Sisters have always been committed to the vulnerable among us, and our commitment to Danville and not leaving Danville, our commitment to behavioral health is unprecedented by other health systems. On a positive note, Heart of Mary will be able to invest in expanding behavioral health services, and I want to speak to these just a little bit. Inpatient care, both the young adult unit, which will be the first of many, I hope, as a model for how that we live into individuals in their early college years. In central Illinois, not just here in Champaign-Urbana, but also in Bloomington and some of our other communities, we have large density of individuals that fit this characteristic and have needs that we can intervene on early. Geriatric population, as we all know, coming out of the pandemic, the isolation has been very pronounced, and it has caused new deficits for these elders. And we want to live into them in a different way. And then, as one of the speakers said before, the reason why we're keeping the 25-bed acute care unit is to serve patients that have dual diagnosis, of both a medical diagnosis as well as a psychiatric diagnosis. It's very difficult for patients that have a need on both to get placement. They can wait a very long time for placement. This unit will be designed to do that. And our on-call services, which are telemedicine, will be able to step up the level of care to allow patients to be safely cared for there until they can be transitioned to psychiatric care. So we're excited about living into the community. Also, we will have robust partial hospitalization, intensive outpatient, which is really kind of the step down to services to transition patients back into their daily lives, as well as we'll continue all of our ambulatory clinics for behavioral health within this community. And I think somebody had also mentioned that a part of the acute medical psych will also be a detox program. This is much needed, unfortunately, in our communities, and we can do that under the watchful eye of physicians. And that will address a growing population and need within our community. This was also highlighted, these needs related to behavioral health were highlighted in our last community health needs assessment. It's number one on them. In reducing our scale, our medical and surgical will support both the medical side that we have for patients with behavioral health needs, while also continuing to support the emergency room department patients and people in immediate crisis. In January, we will be working with a national-known provider, US Health Fest. They've partnered with us in the development of a new joint venture behavioral health hospital in Peoria, and they will be coming to help us manage our behavioral health services here in Urbana. They will bring years and years' worth of expertise and subject matter expertise to Urbana to allow us to develop these new services and live into this challenge and hopefully bend the curve. OSF is committed to our mission partners. As we are concerned about the health and well-being of our patients, throughout this strategic transformation, we've made a significant investment in resources from our leadership to our human resources to try to navigate the transition, though it be extremely difficult. Our programs facilitate transitions among our mission partners to help them redistribute to other opportunities within the ministry. Our goal had been to provide 75% of the mission partners affected with redistributions, and we were able to achieve about 80% offers into those roles. And today, we've had an acceptance rate of about 65%. So though that not be the way that we would want it, we want mission partners to stay with OSF indefinitely. We really have done what we can to try to secure that, but we also know that they have other opportunities to stay within the community. As has been previously stated, healthcare continues to be a growing need. So we remain committed to OSF's mission to serve with the greatest care and love in a community that celebrates the gift of life. And living into this repositioning is going to allow us to help the least among us, the most vulnerable among us, and that's what we've been called to do. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to testify who has not had an opportunity? Ma'am. If you could please introduce yourself to the court reporter.
My name is Joan Dixon, and I'm a resident of Champaign. I was born at Mercy Hospital, which is the precursor. It was Mercy, then Covenant, then Provena, then Presence, then OSF, and now gone. It's sad to see a hospital that started in 1919, that has been a core element in this community, go away, for all intents and purposes. God knows we need the psych services that they will provide. That's wonderful. My first experience with volunteering was as a candy striper at Mercy Hospital. And that set me on the path as a volunteer for the rest of my life. And that's been, oh, five or 10 years since I was candy striper. They laugh. But I was a senior director at Christie Clinic for 10 years, so had the opportunity to work with the folks at, I think it was Provena at the time, and perhaps Presence. We shared goals, we shared missions, we shared patients. But it all comes down to money, and we recognize that. And if they're losing as much money as they say, and I'm sure they're right, it is unsustainable for them. Rather than closing the services that we've been accustomed to, I think Champaign-Urbana, as a community, Champaign County, and our surrounding areas deserves two hospitals. We can support them. So I would encourage OSF to sell the facility they have here to another hospital entity that can actually run a hospital and to reestablish relationships with the physicians at Christie Clinic, which at one point represented 80% of their admissions. Thank you.
Is there anyone who wishes to testify? Yes, sir, please step up, state your name.
I wasn't sure I was going to testify, but my name's John Peterson. I'm a physician. I have had a healthcare regulatory background. I was president of the Health Systems Agency in this county in the late '70s. The Health Systems made it with a federal attempt to try to rein in hospital costs, healthcare costs. It was a miserable failure. We reported to you folks, and it never made any difference. The decisions that were made at the state level were made by lobbyists. What I encourage people to do here is to realize that the hospital is going to get what it wants. We are therefore going to be losing an alternative in the medical side. They closed the cardiology unit, which was going gangbusters. But that might be the only service that was going real well. And I have to admit that in 1980, if you asked me these questions, I would know all the answers, the numbers, the FTEs. I don't at this point. I'm, at this point, a dude who is using medical care and just recently retired, but doing volunteer work. And my volunteer work is in the mental health field. I'm an addiction specialist. So there are a couple, I never made myself very popular in the late '70s, and I don't think I want to start now. OSF made two major mistakes. The second major mistake was shortly after the first. And that was a complete screw-up on its negotiations with Christie Clinic. Everybody knows that. Christie is no longer with them because OSF failed to take them seriously. And they attempted to use them as a stopgap before they developed their own services. Christie was aware of that, they weren't born yesterday. And so they began a series of negotiations with Carl that worked out to Christie's benefit and frankly, to a lot of Christie patients as well. The first mistake was buying the hospitals. You don't buy a major medical institution network into failing economies. And I worked at OSF, what became OSF. I worked through Mercy and I don't know how many other names as an ER physician, 90 hours a week for 25 years in one form or another. Very much aware of the hospital, spent many hours in the ICU, which I had an echocardiogram done last Friday. The ICU is populated by nightlights at this point. I couldn't believe it when I saw it. They bought into Danville. Danville, in the 1980s, was a great union town. The guys would tell me that if they wanted to upgrade their job, they would just walk down the street. There is hardly any good employment in Danville anymore. Danville wanted that prison so badly. What they forgot was, or didn't realize was, that prisoners have families. And Daly cleaned out a lot of the housing projects about that time. So the failing employment left a lot of unsold homes. Those were bought up by investors who turned them into Section 8 housing. And so what you've got now is a really bad economic environment with a huge drug problem. I don't know that anybody in this board really appreciates what the drug problem is in Danville. It's very difficult to run a hospital on a lack of commercial insurance. And it's going to be very difficult to run a hospital on no Medicaid funding. The $800 billion that the Trump administration is taking out of Medicaid cannot be made up by the state of Illinois. So we certainly appreciate and applaud the focus toward mental health. As a mental health provider, I'll guarantee you, we do need more beds. But I don't see the viability of this organization in the short term, particularly after the midterm elections, when Medicaid cuts come in. And I don't know the solution to it, but it ain't going to be keeping the Urbana hospital open. The financial viability doesn't exist. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to testify who has not had an opportunity? Ma'am, if you'd like to speak, please come up. If you'll give us your full name, please.
My name is Pam Dazie Delay. I'm an RN, BSN. I worked at OSF for 20 years. I'm a townie, actually born in Burnham Hospital, but I have three granddaughters that were born at OSF. at OSF. And I too was a candy striper from '66 to '70. Mrs. Houston was head of our candy strippers. Her son was on the Illinois football team, Sam. Anyway, that went to the Rose Bowl. It was, you know, it's part of the town. OSF was part of the town. Mercy was part of the town. I walked the halls of Mercy Hospital. I'm a volunteer. I went back. I retired five years ago, but I volunteer. On Fridays, I go out and I give communion to the Catholics that were in the hospital. I didn't go this past Friday because there weren't any Catholics to give communion to, and my heart was broken. I just, you know, it's falling apart. It's ending now, and it's, my late husband passed away there. I worked medical oncology for 20 years. I became very close to many patients and families there and went through a lot with them. It's a family. Many of my fellow nurses are here, and I was telling someone that I look on Facebook and I see, this is my last day at OSF, and they would talk about it. And people, other nurses who were there would respond and say, you were a great nurse. Thank you for that. You guided me. You helped me because we were family. We supported each other. We loved each other. We were family, and the patients knew that. They felt it. They felt the camaraderie. They felt cared for. They felt loved and needed, and that's why it's so hard. Some of the nurses I work with, this is their second hospital to lose because they lost Burnham too. And Burnham and Mercy had formed a covenant together, and then they closed Burnham. So this is their second hospital to lose. That's really, really hard when your life is to give your life to care for people and love them, and this is part of who you are. So I just want to say that this is a real tragedy for Champaign-Urbana. I remember when there was Cole Hospital and McKinley Hospital and Carl Hospital and Mercy Hospital and Burnham Hospital. Now there's Carl. And that's really sad for a community of our size. It really is. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to testify who has not had an opportunity? Ma'am, with your hand up, please step forward and give us your full name.
My name is Cynthia Lamert, also known as Cindy by most people. I didn't plan to testify. I appreciate.
Can I have the spelling of your last name, please?
Lamert.
L-A-M-B-E-R-T?
No. L-A-M-M-E-R-T.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Story of my life.
Sorry.
So anyway, so I didn't plan to testify. I highly appreciate the data that many of the people who did testify have presented. Very much appreciate that. Actually, I have some notes, so I better just go to my notes. So I am a community member. I live in Champaign. I've been here since 1972, so not a townie, although I've become a townie. My children were born and raised here. And while I am very, very glad to see the proposed addition of the behavioral health services, which are badly needed in this community, I do not trust honestly that OSF will follow through on the grand plans that they have presented. That trust is based on the fact that I was an OSF employee. I'm a registered nurse for 40 years. I was PRN, which basically means on-call. I was the longest-standing PRN employee they ever had. I worked on the maternal-child unit. When we had a Peds unit, I worked on Peds. I worked NICU. I worked labor and delivery. I worked postpartum, all those areas, you know. When OSF came to town and bought them, I was actually excited because I had seen the drop in services and providers, even though we still had the connection with Christie Clinic. I thought, when they presented their plans, that this would be a vibrant, you know, change for the community. I very much appreciated that there would be an alternative to Carl. I'm not bad-mouthing Carl. I actually go to Carl as a patient. I finally considered changing and becoming an OSF patient because I so valued the focus that they had. But what I found, I retired two years ago, so, is that they didn't follow through on all of that. Yes, I think they did put in all that money. I really do believe that. I think they tried really hard, but there were other things that they could have done, specifically on the OB unit. They didn't listen to some of the staff and things that we said, and they closed the unit two years ago. I stuck it out till the bitter end, and no, very sad. So that leads me to not trust them now, that they will not, a year, two years from now, I don't know when, to still follow through with those big plans, even though I think they're wonderful. I really know that we need mental health services and expansion of those. But we need two hospitals, two functioning hospitals. People are not able to or willing to drive to Bloomington, Peoria, Danville for those kinds of primary services. I mean, I would have been more than willing to change, but as I saw what happened, I thought, why should I bother to change and change my providers? You know, because it's just all going to go downhill. So that's all I have to say.
Is there anyone who wishes to testify who has not had an opportunity? Seeing none, is there anyone who has testified who wishes to provide additional testimony? I would remind everyone to submit your written comments to us so that we may have this information for the record. Also, the project is scheduled for consideration by the Illinois Health Facilities and Services Review Board at its November 18, 2025 meeting. This meeting will be held at the Bowling Brook Municipal Golf Club, 2001 Rodeo Drive, Bowling Brook, Illinois. The public has until October 29, 2025, to submit written comments. These comments can be sent to my attention at the Illinois Health Facilities and Services Review Board, care of the Illinois Department of Public Health, 525 West Jefferson Street, second floor, Springfield, Illinois, 627610001. If you prefer, you may email your comments. Our email address is www.dph.hfsrb.illinois.gov. Are there any questions? Seeing that there are no additional questions or comments, I deem this public hearing adjourned. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.